Christine.
Um, I sent her the invite. Hopefully she's coming. She didn't say that she wasn't going to, so I'm hoping to see her.
Okay, great. All right, so why don't we, oh, here she is.
You have the, you say it and they show up.
Wow. There she is. Hi Christine. You're muted.
Hi Greg. You too. Hi Vangella.
Hi Christine, how are you?
I'm fine. Nice to see you.
You too.
I'm sorry. Hi everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, it looks like we have a full complement and I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 6:03 and welcome everyone to our 11th Library Committee Regular Meeting. And we have a pretty full agenda. We did a roll call, but I just wanted to give the mayor an opportunity to introduce. We have two invited guests and I'll let the mayor introduce our guests and we'll get started with the meeting.
Hi, good afternoon or good evening, everyone. So I have invited to the meeting today Mr. Bob Ike and Ms. Christine Grant to fill vacant seats on the, well, one vacant seat and one regular seat on the Building Committee, but I wanted them to attend the meeting first because they have, they're just getting up to speed and then we will make the appointments official thereafter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Well, welcome Christine and Bob and I guess maybe you two would like to, you know, introduce yourselves and say hello. Bob, you know, you're no stranger to town, I'll start.
Good evening. My name is Robert W. Ike. I presently serve on the Public Works Building Committee. I previously served on the Board of Education. We did renovations. Bob Berman was part of one of those building committees. I served on Carbon A-Race Building Committee. Presently, I'm Register Voters. I'm on the Board of Education. I'm an alternate to the ZBA. I'm the Chairman of the Bloomfield Republican Town Committee and I'm glad to be here to continue my community service. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Robert. Christine? You're muted. You're muted.
Oh, you think we'd all know Zoom already, right? I'm currently a resident here in the town of Bloomfield and I really enjoy the town. I really also enjoy the library. So when asked, it really intrigued me and I've done a lot of work with prior leaders of the library, so I enjoy the work of the library. I'm also at the University of Hartford off the street as the Executive Director for Diversity and Community Engagement and in conversation with the mayor, just thought about how, if possible, if needs be, how there might be opportunities for partnerships or working together the town and also, again, ultimately with the library. So again, I'm intrigued. I've been on, I think I was part of the Town Council a few years, about a year ago. So again, Bloomfield is the town I live in. Bloomfield is the town I want to see prosper.
Great. Well, again, welcome to both you and Mr. Ike. And I would say just for formality purposes, Christine and Robert, you all won't be allowed to vote this evening. But hopefully we'll have you appointed and sworn in and ready to go for our next committee meeting, which will take place on December 30th. All right, so with that being said.
Before we go, before we get going, I also wanted to introduce Vangella. She is an ad hoc member of the Building Committee and tonight we've had some, some difficulties connecting with her and getting her in her information, but she's here tonight. So I thought maybe she could introduce herself to the panel, to the committee as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Vangella Buchanan. I reside in Windsor, but I am a business owner in Bloomfield. I own the Writer Inc. LLC, which is the small publishing company and bookstore. We just recently moved, so we're, we have been expanding and I am here to support your endeavors.
Thank you so much and welcome.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, great. I'm excited. Look at this full compliment. The screen is blowing up here. This is awesome. Okay, just gonna roll into old business. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from November 18?
I'll move approval, Greg.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, great. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying yay or raising your hand.
Yay. Yay.
Okay, any abstentions or anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Under item three, new business, before I go into new business, I'm sorry, I just wanted to take a moment to, to thank everyone on the committee. On the 6th of December, after our last board meeting, I sent out an email to the group talking about establishing subcommittees and asked for people to volunteer to join in the various subcommittees. And by the 7th, I had heard from everyone. We talked about establishing an external survey, marketing committee, a program committee and a construction manager committee. And I really want to take this moment to thank everyone for their prompt replies and their willingness to step up. Through that process of their individuals have agreed to lead those various subcommittees. Maxine has agreed to, to lead the external subcommittee. Leah is doing the program committee. And Mark has agreed to lead the construction manager's subcommittee. So thank you all for, for agreeing to do so and for everyone who is participating on a subcommittee. For Christine and Mr. Ike will get you all involved on a subcommittee as well as Vangella if you're so inclined. And there will be other committees coming up in the future, but again, those committees established because we want to make our meetings more efficient, more effective and more productive. And we really want to get these working committees to, to work on some of the big issues that we're looking at and trying not to get bogged down in the minutia during our full committee meetings, but allowing the folks who are serving on those subcommittees to, to do the work and to report out to this group so that we can keep the ball rolling. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Whit and Richard for an update from Tysookin Partners, our architects.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I'd like to have further discussion as it relates to the subcommittees.
Further discussion?
Yes. I would. Because I do have some concerns. And although I did respond to the email volunteering for a subcommittee, I really wasn't comfortable with doing so, but I did anyway to try to be more of a team player. But the purpose of me being here is to be a team player, but to also keep the best interest of Bloomfield in mind. I think that a further discussion is required because we did not vote. It was a suggestion and then a request. I think that the overall committee should have had a decision and further discussions as it relates to that. We already meet every two weeks as an overall committee. I don't understand how it will be possible to report out after meeting every two weeks as an overall committee, meet as subcommittees and, and at the same time, keep the public abreast. How will you schedule this? Because I then feel like I will then have to attend every meeting for every subcommittee, whether I'm a member of said committee or not. Just so that I can hear the discussion with my own two ears versus, you know, what has been determined by that committee to be shared with the committee as well as the overall community of Bloomfield. And, and I have grave concerns with that. I have researched other building committees and it, and it's nice that you have other people here that have participated on other building committees, whether it be here in Bloomfield or in other towns throughout the state. This is one library that we're talking about and I don't understand why there has to be all of these subcommittees to address our discuss, what we need to discuss. Now, maybe we need to meet once a week as a committee and then meet with our architect and the Burgers who we've hired as consultants at this regular scheduled meeting. But I think that we've been deprived of an opportunity of genuine discussion and dialogue as to the direction of this committee and we're forced to compress it into this meeting, which then makes this meeting longer than it possibly needs to be. Now, I have also thought about and, and no disrespect to you, Elizabeth, with regards to your reporting out of the library. But I think that some of the information that has been shared, we either get via the emails from the library and/or should be part of the discussion with the library trustees and not at this building committee. So that may alleviate time, but I do think a lot of time is taken up because of the fact that some of the discussions, whether this entire committee or some members of this committee are included in those discussions, when those discussions take place, are left and forced with having the discussion now at the scheduled meeting. Did you catch everything I just said?
I did and I was waiting for you to finish and I didn't know. There were a number of questions in your comments, but I would say, Budunzi, as far as my personal opinion is that it's not uncommon. Can I fit?
I'm not interested in your personal opinion. Our personal opinions have no value here with regards to, you know, the functionality of this committee. These are observations that I've made. These are not personal. They are observations that, that have been made.
Okay, well, we have established subcommittees, working committees, and it's not uncommon with building committees to have subcommittees to dive into the issues that the entire group has to work on. And one of the primary reasons for doing so is to consolidate time and make the best use of our time as a full committee. And each of the committees are responsible for reporting back out and as, as you've seen, there are minutes from those subcommittee meetings. And I think what's important here is that we have to trust our colleagues, right? We all represent the citizens in the town of Bloomfield. And not everyone can serve on every subcommittee and we are trusting the process. And the subcommittees will report to the full committee if you have concerns or questions, that's where you voice it. But we can't, well, what I find is we get caught up in the minutia of dealing with everything. We need working committees so that we can get through what we need to do in our timeline. And if you want to participate in subcommittees, you're more than welcome to. If you want to join in and those subcommittees that you're not a party to, you're more than welcome to do that. But we have a lot of work to do and the subcommittees are the best way to get that work done because we are not afforded a lot of time with our regular committee meetings to do so. And that's the reason why we had the subcommittees and people have volunteered to step up and roll up their sleeves and do the actual hard work that needs to be done that we don't have time to do during this full committee meeting. Bob, I saw you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to add two things in here. Number one, I, I have worked on a couple, a couple of building committees too and subcommittee work on those works a lot more effectively and efficiently. I have utter faith in the people on the subcommittees to report back to us what they've discussed, what their conclusions are and if they see any issues. I don't see any subcommittees making final decisions because of course they're not going to. That is not their purview. I concerned that you think it's important that, that basically we all are involved in every single aspect of it. None of us have that time. And we need to be efficient and effective. And the only way we're going to be efficient and effective is to go ahead with some committees and I suspect as Greg said, we're going to need a couple more along the way because it's gonna be a lot, a lot of work in a short period of time to get it done in. If we're gonna go to referendum next November, we have a tremendous amount of work that has to be done before we even get to June. And with COVID-19 creating issues in terms of being able to meet, talk to one another in person and all the rest, there isn't time.
I think that the meetings will be more, more time as a result of these subcommittees. It will take up more time. It will take up more time on the subcommittees as well as taking up more discussion during these meetings with each subcommittee reporting back. That's gonna be more dialogue and discussion.
Okay, well, we're done to you. Trust the process and let's see what happens. If you find that it's taking up your time, then, then we usually do and that's a legitimate concern, but I, my guess is. Can I finish my, and then allow you to have the floor, but please let me finish.
Sure.
More than welcome to, to revisit this, but I think that we've already made a decision what we're going to do vis a vis the subcommittees. And I think that let's trust the process and if you're concerned that it isn't working or it's not efficient or effective, then we can revisit it. But I do. Others have.
I thought you were done. Pardon me.
Any other comments? Because I really want to move this along. Michelle? You're muted, Michelle. I'm sorry.
Okay. Backing up a little bit and listening to the comments that have been given thus far, and I think that I evidenced a similar content, comments in a different way. I think that the design and structure of the committee is what is confusing to many of us. I tried to make sense of it with regard to how we are proceeding and one of the things that I find that is missing from this group is consensus. There are too many things that we have not discussed with regard to the design and structure of the committee and whether or not such basic things as are we a working committee or not have not been discussed as far as I know, and I think I only missed one meeting because of illness. The second observation, and I say this with all affection to our architectural firm, that it seems to me that the architectural firms is driving the form of our meetings. And I'm not just saying that they shouldn't have a very great place in that responsibility, but it should not be exclusive, nor should it be time-wise taking up as much time as it does, because I think that what it does is leaves a lot less time for this committee to understand what it is doing from the standpoint of work product. I think that's not clear. Even with this, the establishment of the committees. I have to say that having worked on a library building committee years ago, that the committees that we had were addressed with much more basic things and some of the committee descriptions seem rather esoteric to me, but because I was ill and could not participate, I will reserve further comment on that. From the standpoint of the architectural firm draw, driving the form of our meetings, I'm only looking at it from the standpoint of the amount of time that is required in order for them to do what they need to do and I, I respect that. However, I think that there is an important point to be made with regard to that. Today, we received at 2:50 PM, a over 30-page presentation today, the day of our meeting. And I can tell you that at that time I was at a COVID-19 meeting for the town of Bloomfield that I chair. I cannot be looking at a 30-page document even in a cursory way to prepare for this meeting. And I will be prepared a little bit later on in the meeting when you, Mr. Chairman, find it appropriate to move that we have a policy with regard to when we receive materials that we are expected to review and/or provide an action. So I think that a lot of these things have never been discussed by this group and they shouldn't be determined by somebody behind the scenes. This is a building committee and the committee should take some ownership of how we do what we do. And there should absolutely be discussion for that and I suggest we take time to do it. Even if, if that means that we have a meeting where our architect would not be present, so we would have that time to devote to housekeeping issues. Because I think a lot of the, the comments that have been made and a lot maybe of the confusion that people have about what we're doing and I have a certain amount of that could be answered. And I think that that could be done forthwith.
Thank you. And Michelle, let me just add to that, you know, if you look at the agenda, we have an update from the architects and we have updates from the working committees. And appropriate time has been allotted for each as well as the director's update, but being as it is, we can get into some discussion after we finish the new business and answer any concerns you may have.
But what I'm saying is up until now, and we've had quite a few meetings, how many did you say? We haven't had time to do that. And I really believe that short shrift has been devoted to these issues and they need to be done. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, let me say that I am more than willing to comply with the committee's direction regarding submission of material sufficiently in advance. I, I apologize if I have not been sensitive to that, but if the commission, if the committee wishes to receive material several days in advance, I'd be more than happy to do that. I, I just need some direction on that. So I did send a PowerPoint presentation. These are my thoughts, my work product from my firm in collaboration with Whit and Tysoo, my partners. I don't expect action on them this evening. It's an update on our investigations of sites thus far. I hope that sometime in the near future though, that we do get direction from the committee if there are any additional sites to be considered. So with that, I would like to now ask that I can share my screen?
Go ahead. Are you able to? There we go.
Okay, very briefly, this is the overall timeline. There have only been a couple of minor changes in this timeline. One is maybe selection of a space planning consultant. We have talked about this previously. I've pushed that out to maybe today and I say maybe. That's up for the committee to discuss the pros and cons of that. Another update is this line item four, meet with the town planner. I have had communication with Jose Geiner, the town planner. He did share with me a list of a town-owned parcels and I will share with, that with you in a moment. So that's been done and I will continue to have dialogue with him. Incidentally, I've also had conversations with the town engineer, which has been very helpful, particularly regarding flooding issues on the Prosser site. Another update is identify remaining sites. I've decided to push that off until this star is not in the right location in January. Hopefully we can get direction from the committee by January on any additional sites that we should be considering. Item number six is done, so in subsequent reports, that will be dropped from this list. The library consultants have been selected. Other items on this timeline have remained unchanged for the benefit of newcomers, Robert Ike, Christine Grant and Vangella Buchanan. Our target is to receive Town Council approval to go to referendum by July of 2021, next year. That will give us enough time to have a referendum. There's a blackout period in which we can't have any kind of material shared with the public. And then the referendum is tentatively scheduled for November of 2021. So that's the overall timetable. This is some immediate milestones, the three items that I just mentioned. Maybe selecting a library planning consultant to help with the space planning document. Hopefully today, if not, then we can certainly talk about that. Identifying, I'm sorry, identifying sites, meeting with the town planner, we can take that off the list and identify any remaining sites. As I say, hopefully the committee can give us firm direction on that. Remember that we owe you up to six different sites to be examined and so far we've only been looking at three, although I tell you, we have been trying to find some additional, so while tonight I will share you some additional thoughts. So again, a reminder for everyone, the three sites that we've been directed by this committee to look at are number one, the Prosser site, the second is the Town Hall, the third is the McMahon and Wintonbury Library on Blue Hills Avenue. And so those three are given. Now, when I spoke with Jose Geiner, by the way, I don't expect you to read this. This is just a printout of an Excel spreadsheet that I received from Jose and the chart on the left here is a listing of about 140, not quite 140 town-owned parcels in sight, in town. And on the right, it's hard to see, but I highlighted the ones that are vacant. The ones that are not highlighted have already some user on them, such as a school, for example. So by a process of elimination, we, we, we did down this list or the town planner, we did down this list to two additional sites, one of which I believe has already been discussed by the committee. Some, some of these parcels are, even though they're vacant, are very tiny. They're just fragments of acreage that have been left over, so that they're not seriously considered. So what appears to be a long list in the end, ends up being a very, very short list based upon Jose's investigation. So the two sites that he added to the list are here, list item number four, which he called Cottage Grove Walsh. And in previous discussions, that was identified as the corner property, Blue Hills and Cottage Grove. And he calls it Cottage Grove Walsh because it's town-owned parcels that are between Cottage Grove Road, which is this route right here and Walsh Street, which is the street just above this parcel on the north side. Blue Hills Avenue is right here. And it's actually two lots. But in previous discussions with this committee, because of the wetlands in these, this location on these parcels and because of the traffic and the difficulty in accessing these properties, I believe this committee has already eliminated that from consideration. So the other parcel that was identified by the planner is number five, Park Brook, which is on Park Avenue. And I'll show you an enlargement of that in a minute. The sixth one did not come from the town planner. This was actually something that was suggested in a, a previous meeting. I can't remember who, it may have been Bob Berman, I'm not sure. But it was two parcels or three parcels that are for sale on Seneca Road. I don't believe at that meeting there was a quorum and so no formal decision was made. So we should, I think, if possible, discuss that tonight as well. So just as an enlargement, here's the Cottage Grove Walsh, which I believe has been eliminated. Park Brook is located here. Seneca Road is off of Park Avenue as well. It's right along the rail line that runs in this direction. So this is an aerial view of the McMahon, of the third parcel McMahon Wintonbury, which is this parcel right here. It's a, it's a rectangular piece, except that there's a little bit of a leg that juts out into this tree area. And from the air, this is what it looks like. This is a modern building that's located here on Blue Hills Avenue. To the north is a fire station. To the left is a gas station. The street that runs between McMahon Wintonbury and the fire station is Rockwell Avenue. So it's a nice parcel. It's right on the corner of two streets. And so we did take a closer look. At the last committee meeting, I reported to you that I felt very optimistic about this parcel. I thought it. I thought it had a great potential because it's level, seems to be large enough. It's about a three and a half acre parcel. So in this diagram, you can see Blue Hills Avenue here on the right, running north and south. Rockwell is over here. The light beige area is the footprint of the existing building. And remember, we had talking about roughly 40,000 square feet of space for, if we were to take, let's say, let's say we take the scenario of a new library, the main library located here, just the worst-case scenario, how much would that take up on this parcel? This is how much it would take up if it were a two-story building. So we would have to add square footage to the existing beige area. The darker beige areas would be additional square footage. Don't get hung up on the shape of this. It's just to show you how much space it would take up on this parcel. And as you can see, it can easily accommodate a 40,000-square-foot building, each floor of which is about 20,000 square feet. The geometry of that shape would change because some of these spaces might be two-story, larger community kinds of spaces. So this is subject to further manipulation after we get the space plan developed. This diagram also shows roughly 110 parking spaces on this parcel. Why 110? It's roughly what we were talking about in previous studies. Whether it's more or less still is subject to final determination by the space planning study. But as you can see, that could be larger. There's no wetlands on this parcel, so it's quite developable. And if it were a brand-new building, it could easily replace the existing building. Again, similar kind of footprint. There is the opportunity to create a drive that would extend here from the rear of the parcel to the fright, to the exit to the right, in order to create a drive-up window. You could create a drive-up window where people could drop off material or pick up material. That drive-up window could be maybe located here along this drive. It would be, let's say, the back of the circulation desk, so you would not need an additional staff person to attend to that window. We have achieved this in one project in Wilton. It works very, very well. And so this configuration on this site, I think, could be quite workable. So I think this parcel remains as a contender. Now, one parcel that Jose Guiner suggested is Park Brook. This is Park Avenue. You know, along the bottom. Brook is a paper street that runs, well, it's a real street here, but if you look at the town mapping, you'll see that this Brook Street actually extends right through here. That's what I mean by a paper street. It's shown on town mapping. It actually wasn't built. So that's why he called it Park Brook. So this is, unfortunately, it's a narrow parcel, but it's quite deep. So there's no way to get a big frontage on Park Avenue. Could it fit? Sure, it could fit. It's not as good as the other parcel I just showed you, but it is potentially a contender if the committee wanted to add this parcel to the three that we already have. Next to this parcel is Sutton Place. This is condominium development. And right next to that also is Touchpoints, which I believe is a nursing home, but I'm not sure. Okay, so are there any other sites? Well, we had in previous conversations talked about, and that's located right here, Seneca Road. We had talked about Seneca Road, which I reminded this committee was identified in the Bloomfield Center Plan that was done a few years ago, not that long ago. And part of the goals of the Bloomfield Center Plan was to look at the potential of Seneca Road being closed and then combining some parcels to see if we can't get some development done there. So I'm picking up on that suggestion that's already existing in the Bloomfield Center Plan. And here's a view of it from the air. This is Seneca Road. And then there are some users already on the parcels that are here. These are fairly small parcels. And even if we were to combine them, you can see the geometry of them is not ideal. It also is adjacent to the rail line that is located here. And the comments by the previous building committee were that, well, these may not actually be desirable to be developed as a library. There's no frontage on Park Avenue. It's not very visible, they're set back. And there's also the rail line. And so there is the potential in the future of these parcels being valuable as a rail station. And so perhaps this should not be considered at all. But I don't think there was a formal action taken by the building committee, so I still think it's on the table. We can continue to keep it on the table until the committee is ready to reject it or not. But I think it will be very, very difficult to develop these parcels as a library, quite frankly. Okay, continuing. So the other day, a few days ago, my partner Tai Su Kim came up to me and Witt and said, so how's it going in Bloomfield? And I said, we were still wondering about some additional sites. We have three definitely. He said, well, let me, let me look at the town, let me see what I can come up with. And he came up, now, these are his ideas. I didn't ask him. He identified a couple of parcels right on Park Avenue located here where these orange shapes are. And if I were to zoom in a little bit on here, what he found is this area in front of the middle school. He thought, oh, that's a great area for potentially a library. And he also found some area here, which is along the rail line, and it's adjacent to the high school. The high school is located here. So let's take a close look at that. I believe that's property owned by CLMP. And so we did look at that area in front, and these are his red bounded lines. He said, let's take a closer look at that. Well, the bad news is that it's wetlands. There's a water course in that area and it's wetlands. And so this tan area that you see here is all wetlands. So even though it looks like a grassy field, I think it would be very difficult to develop in terms of wetlands. The other area, this is on Park Avenue. Here's the rail line running along it. This is a large parcel, it's owned, I believe, by CLMP. And there's an area in front that looks nice. Grassy, has some trees on it. But again, it's all wetlands. This is all wetland area. So again, I think we're going to have to eliminate those as possibilities. And those are his ideas, he just volunteered those, but I wanted to report that to this committee. So let's go back to Prosser. I have had conversations with the town engineer. I believe I reported at a previous meeting that I was interested in maybe looking at Riley Lumber Parcel, which is located here. Just to orient you, this shape right here is the existing Prosser Library Building. This is Tungus Avenue, Bloomfield Avenue, Park Avenue, and Mountain Avenue. And this is Wintonbury Mall. Town Hall is right here. So there is a water course that runs from north to south called Washbrook. And it does tend to flood. This blue area designates a hundred-year flood. And meaning that once every hundred years, it may spill over. It doesn't mean guaranteed once every hundred years. It could also be two, two years in a row. And it has flooded in the past. And in fact, it has flooded the lowest level of the library in the past. But in my most recent conversations with the town engineer, he thought that the strategy we had taken the last time we studied this was appropriate, that if we develop this, the Riley parcel could be parking, but not as a building. At a previous committee meeting, I reported to this committee that I'm intrigued with the possibility of developing Riley for a building. However, my conclusion is, is that the only way to do that is to put a building on stilts, quite frankly. And I don't think that that would be appropriate. And the town engineer agreed. He said that our strategy previously was to expand the existing library, perhaps even raise, in other words, lift that library so that it's higher, and then have some parking on this side as well as parking on the other side with a bridge connecting both sides of the Brook. As a reminder, this is what we had developed the last time. This is the footprint of the existing building. We talked about completely renovating it, adding on to it in order to get roughly 40,000 square feet of library building. The lowest level of the library would not be used for library program. It would be used for parking and service and those kinds of amenities. And across the way would be parking with a connector across the Brook here. And then finally, a reminder on the Town Hall site. The last time we looked at this, we felt that we could do a three-story building, not a one- or two-story building. And town and library planners will tell you that, you know, three-story is not as good as two-story, which is not as good as one-story, especially when it comes to flexible spaces and staffing, those spaces with library staffing. So in summary, here's where we are. A few meetings ago, Witt shared with you a draft of a site selection chart such as this. At that time, he had Wintonbury Mall on the list, but that was eliminated. We had also 330 Park Avenue on the list, that was eliminated. The fourth item here, or number four parcel, a corner property. Today, I'm calling it Cottage Grove Walsh, according to the town planner's terminology, but that's been eliminated. So on the table right now, we have Prosser Library, Town Hall. We have McMahon-Wintonbury. The new parcel that the planner talked about, Park Brook. And still on the table is Seneca Road, which I'm not optimistic about at all, quite frankly. That's where we are. So I look to the committee, if there are any other thoughts about parcels in town, we'd be happy to add them to the list.
So Richard, yeah, Richard, this is Greg. You made reference to the fact that Seneca Road does not seem viable. But do you see Park Brook as a potentially viable location? And if so, are you recommending that we add it to the list of consideration?
Yes, I would add it to the list. It's a parcel that was identified by the town planner. It seems to be large enough to accommodate it. It's not as, I will tell you, it's not as desirable as the McMahon-Wintonbury parcel. If you want to go back to that picture. It's located here. And so, you know, remember the population density is over here in town. This is along a stretch of road where people would have to travel to it. It's not near the center, it's not near this. According to the town plan of development, conservation and development, this is a hub, meaning that there's a community activity in this location. So it's, from that standpoint, it's not as desirable, I think, as this parcel. But I think, I think we should look at it, quite frankly. I think members of the public, I think, town council may ask the questions, what did you look at? I think we need to put it on the list.
I have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned about the Town Hall location. Can you explain a bit more why it is not really desirable? Is that what it is?
Well, that's a discussion that we need to have with this committee and with the library director and library staff. The last time we studied it, so let's talk about it. So this is the Town Hall parcel. This is the existing Town Hall building. And it has a demand for parking. The library would have a demand for parking. We tried to fill as much parking as we could on this piece. There is a wetlands line that runs approximately where my cursor is. So that leaves very little space for footprint of a standalone library building. And I think the discussion in the previous study was, we really want a standalone library building. We didn't want to attach it to the Town Hall because who knows what the future of the Town Hall would be. And so we developed a standalone three-story building. Is three-story desirable? Well, I think I would ask the library staff whether three-story is acceptable to them. In my opinion, one story is ideal because it gives you a lot of flexibility. It minimizes the need for staffing and operations. Two-story is not bad, maybe one story with a mezzanine, for example. But three-story, now it starts to stratify the activities in the library. Maybe the way to do a three-story building, which is what we did in this plan, is we created support spaces, library staff spaces and administrative offices on the uppermost level. And then the lower two levels were areas for patrons. And then we had a community room located here. So is this doable? Yes, it is doable.
Richard?
Yes, Mark.
You know, over the years, there have been a lot of different concepts looked at for the Town Hall site. There was, I believe it was back in 2011, there was a scheme, and it's been shared with this committee in all of our materials, of an addition to Town Hall. And then in 2016, what you're showing here was one of the iterations. There were a number of other iterations. I would really like to see all of those revisited at this point because there were a lot of different options. And I mean, I for one am not shy of involving the Town Hall building itself in this process if it needs to be, if that's what's best for the town of Bloomfield. I realize that our charge at this moment doesn't talk about Town Hall, but if, but if we're finding out that we could have a better solution that does, I think we should be looking at that and not move away from it. And I don't know whether it is a better solution or viable, but there's just a lot of opportunities there. We never really looked at facing the building on Bloomfield Avenue. Yeah, over there. And I'm not proposing that as better, but we didn't look at it. So I, so I think, you know, the site still has a lot of work to be done on it, to say whether it's a good site or a bad site and how it compares.
Fair enough. So I am familiar with the previous studies that were done. We were involved in a number of options, so we can certainly revisit all of them as well as others. I'm not taking this off the table. I think we should continue studying the Town Hall parcel. And I believe the addition scheme, we developed an addition scheme as well. But I believe the one that you were referring to was done by Tuttle and Wells beforehand, before us. And it had an addition back here. So we can certainly revisit that, Mark.
Also, just to add, I know at one of the previous meetings, there was discussion about the possibility of combining the rear lot parking of a number of those parcels along Jeremy Street, Jeremy Avenue. Yes, right there.
Jerome.
Jerome, sorry. Which might be a way to alleviate some of the parking issues here or have some overlap and some sharing of parking that might give a little space to work with.
Right, and that is consistent with the Bloomfield Town Center Plan. I mean, that was one of the goals of that plan, was to try to consolidate parking. It makes a lot of sense. So we should look at that again. I agree.
Richard?
Yes.
It's Lois. It seems to me that we need to have a discussion about how we would feel about having the library on Blue Hills Avenue as opposed to in the center of town, the effect on the town, the effect on the people in the town. Before we try to figure out the details of these sites, it's clear to me that the easiest site it's clear to me that the easiest site to deal with would be the McMahon site. And we could have almost anything we wanted or needed there. So the question is, since that would be the easiest site, is there, is there a reason not to pursue that? Does it impact the, how the town develops? Does it impact how the library is used? Just seems to me that that's really important because it is way on the east side. And if the location of the site as opposed to the confirmation of the site is important, we ought to have that discussion.
I would welcome that discussion. I would absolutely welcome that discussion. It's very important, and it will change the character of Bloomfield Library, which I love the way Elizabeth describes Bloomfield Library. She describes it as Prosser, McMahon-Wintonbury, and the digital library. So in her mind, it's all of those three entities. But in our office, we've been discussing the same subject. I think this is, this is a major issue that needs to be discussed. And I don't know what the Burgers are doing in terms of their survey. Quite frankly, I haven't seen anything from them. But I don't know if they're planning to present location options and trying to get some sense from members of the community about one location versus another. But it will certainly change the character of Bloomfield Library. If, let's say, I'm just throwing it out there. Let's say the main library or the main branch is located at McMahon-Wintonbury, and a branch is located at Prosser, for example.
Richard, that is a good segue into the next item on the agenda, which is an update on the external meetings with the Burgers and that committee. Do you have anything you want to close on before we segue into that?
No, my final thought is-
I have questions, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I can't see any question.
I have questions, Mr. Chairman. Michelle.
And so do I, Bob.
Oh, the hands, Nancy, you have, I can't see the hand raised. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. Richard, are you saying that the Bloomfield Avenue site could not be built, library couldn't be there because of wetlands? Is that what you're saying?
The Bloomfield Avenue site here? Well, we would have, we would have to create some mitigation of wetlands. So in other words, if you, if you, we would need to meet with wetlands and say, look, here's our strategy. We're going to encroach on the wetland area here, but we're going to offset that with some newly created wetlands somewhere on the site. That would be the strategy to take. I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm saying we have to have some sort of agreeable strategy that the Wetlands Commission would be, would find acceptable.
And my other question is, why the L shape on Park Avenue? Why not just run it straight down further on Park Avenue toward Bloomfield Avenue, Texas?
You talking about in this direction?
No, the other way.
This way?
If you go to where you have the current location on Town Hall Site, go left, right down that way. Why not go further down that way rather than the L shape?
In front of the town hall?
Well, it wouldn't be in front, it would be beside it. If you continue running down, instead of your L shape as it is now, you-
Oh, I see, just extend it.
Just extend it down.
Just extend it further, yeah. Well, I, I think it was done to keep this build, the town hall building visible. So if you're driving down Bloomfield Avenue, we wanted to make sure that this building is very distinguished from this building.
Well, you've already taken away the parking in the entrance to the town hall from there.
Yes, that's correct.
You've already eliminated that. You've eliminated the parking that currently exists. Therefore, you might as well just continue down. And if you did that, then you can have an entrance off Park Avenue, basically where you have the L.
Create an entrance here?
Yep.
Well, we can certainly take a look at that. This, this building has windows here. I can't remember what rooms are over here, but we didn't want to encroach too closely on it. If we extend it, then we're creating a-
The people, it's the assessor's office and the town clerk's office on the lower level, and IT is above the assessor, and registrars are above the town clerk.
Okay. Well, we can certainly look at reconfiguring this.
Because what you've done right there made it very difficult to get into town hall.
Okay.
Michelle?
Yes, I have two questions and a comment. I would like to ask Richard how you would define your influence in offering site preferences?
Well, as an architect, my influence is, is limited to whether or not the functions fit on the site, the fitment, whether or not they have any impact on other things like wetlands, for example. But I cannot comment on the placement of the building in terms of appropriateness, in terms of future development of the town. I would rely on, for instance, the Economic Development Commission of the town planner or the ultimate growth of the town to weigh in on those kinds of factors.
I understand that. What I'm particularly interested in is the continued use of the term desirable versus undesirable. By desirable, which is subjective, certainly to all of us, I would ask, is something that's not desirable is something you would rather not design on? Is it something you don't aesthetically admire? But to say something is not desirable is not very specific with regard to taking something off the table. And you also use that phrase. And I would suggest that we are at the point in site selection that we shouldn't be taking much of anything off the table. But with regard to the term desirable, I'd really appreciate knowing how you see that because then maybe I can understand it better.
That's a very good point. So that's, that's why a committee is established because different folks have different viewpoints. And I'm an outside consultant who has experience in designing buildings and having buildings built. So my, my, my view of what's a desirable site is maybe different than another member of this body that has convened here. So when I use the term desirable, I'm talking about ease of development, for example, from, from an architectural or construction standpoint. That's why if I say the Prosser site may not be as desirable as another site because I can foresee that we're going to be having some cost associated with flood mitigation or some complexity in developing that parcel. And when I look at a site like McMahon-Wintonbury, just strictly from a constructability standpoint, wearing my constructability hat, I see that as desirable because it's much easier to develop physically. So I should really qualify what I mean when I say desirable.
And that helps me understand what your perspective is a little bit better. But then it goes to the other question about preference. And speaking to, you mentioned that you spoke to the town engineer, you spoke to the town planner, you have your own personal views about what is desirable, and so do they. And I certainly respect all those professional disciplines that each of you represent. However, going to Lois's comment, none of you is a resident here. The town engineer isn't, from what I understand. The town planner isn't, you aren't. And from the standpoint of what the residents here would respect, we really have got to know what that is and what they want. So although I appreciate all of the input, that's the reason why I wanted to know what you meant by desirable, especially with regard to taking certain sites off the table. My last item is a comment that I have about the Wintonbury site. And I looked at it. I looked at the other site, and I understand what you're saying from the standpoint of, to me, that's a clean site as an urban planner from the standpoint of your building envelope and your footprint and what you can do there. However, when I look at the different concepts that you are looking at, that's a showpiece. I don't believe that you put a showpiece behind things. A showpiece is there to be admired, to have a vista that people can appreciate from even some small distance. I also have very real concerns about traffic approach there. So I understand what you're saying. But of those sites that you are talking about, that would be my least desirable one for those reasons.
Fair enough, fair enough. I hear you loud and clear.
Okay, so I just thought that it might help to know how you are interpreting these things so that when you say these things, we can have a little bit better feeling about where you're coming from. The last question I have for you is, is the referendum date of 2021 a date either requested or approved by the town council? I'm just looking at it from a timing standpoint.
The date would have to be established by the town council. I have not established that date.
Okay, so they have not formally established it?
No, no.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I appreciate your comments, believe me.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Tsu Kim Partners?
I do. I continue to have my hands up, and I'm not quite sure.
I can't, I apologize, I can't see.
Anybody? Okay. Rick, why is it that you're not quite sure as to what the Burgers are doing at this point? I thought they were tasked to have this information or start having a survey available to go out to the public at the first part of the year. I'm a bit concerned that you haven't even seen what a sample or what the survey would look like. At our last meeting, I requested a copy of the survey or a sample of what the survey would look like to have an idea as to, you know, how close it fits the needs of our community. And so I'm a bit concerned with regards to that and where they are with that. I also have some concerns with regards to, we spend a lot of time talking about locations, locations, locations. And if we're talking about twenty-five million dollars that we're going to go to the people of Bloomfield and ask them to support and be willing to pay a tab via their taxes. I mean, everyone got taxes this week and it said, you know, this is what you have to pay based on the estimate of what the state has to give. We can't foresee, once it comes time for us to have to make payment on, on paying for this bill, where we would stand. So I'd like to see and get an answer from you as to your ability to provide us with alternatives as it relates to the existing Prosser Library and making the modifications to that, which you guys were aware of based on your previous work with this, as well as making updates and modifications to McMahon. So versus spending a lot of time looking for a location to put just one library for twenty-five million, I'd like to know, can we get modifications and upgrades to both? And what that will look like, the schematics of what you're able to bill on each of those locations for the twenty-five million that you're, you know, that's been discussed during this committee?
Actually, I can answer that for Richard. I think we're a little bit getting ahead of ourselves, if my recollection is correct. The, first of all, your question about the Burgers, I think that we have a subcommittee that's going to report back on that because that's their task. It wasn't assigned to our architect to coordinate the questionnaire.
Excuse me, Nancy. But I'm concerned that she's not allowing him to answer my question. The Burgers are actually employed by Tsu Kim.
No, they're not, no, they're not.
So we went into an individual agreement with the Burgers?
We did.
With the agreement with Tsu Kim?
Excuse me, we, the direction of this building committee, yes, that they wanted the town to be the one that was entering into an agreement with the Burgers. So the, and the subcommittee is overseeing that, not the architect. As part of the architect's agreement, the pre-construction agreement, they are to study six, up to six sites. And when we get to the point of having public meetings, it was intended that we would get feedback on those sites before we were to move forward with any type of schematics or estimates and, you know, try to narrow down the site. Also, during that time, it's anticipated that the building committee would be making presentations to the town council to get feedback from the town council on all of this as well. So I appreciate all the things you're saying, and I know everybody's anxious, but, you know, some of the stuff is a little bit cart before the horse. The process would be that was agreed upon and that we're moving towards is having them investigate sites first, and then we'll, we'll present those and get feedback from the residents and people who come to our public meetings.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, and let me just say that the subcommittee on the external community survey submitted their minutes, and those were sent out to the group, I believe, on Monday. Maxine was going to report out specifically, but I think she had to sign off because of the time. But those minutes are included in the packet. I don't know if Maxine is still-
Will you get rid of the chair?
Yes, that might be helpful.
Thank you.
She is not here, but everyone received the minutes from that subcommittee meeting, which took place on Saturday. And so if Maxine signs back in, she can report out. But in that absence, I'm going to ask Leah to report out on the program subcommittee.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start, I wanted to thank Greg and Elizabeth for making the subcommittee process so easy. It was really, it's my first time, and you guys were an awesome help. So we met this past Saturday, and as Greg said, you guys should all have the minutes in your email. The discussion centered around considering whether we should have the Burgers not just consult on the survey process, but also on the program planning. The subcommittee felt in agreement with Liz that the benefits of their experience and the taking some of the onus off of library staff in the committee would make it well worth the investment. We do have funding available. So we're going to recommend that we make a vote on that. It doesn't have to be tonight. We can wait until we get a proposal from them. We also discussed ways in which the elements of the library program should be organized, so things that are critical, that the library has to have, things that the library should have, and other things that are identified that would be really fantastic, but not required. We also discussed some resources for gathering more info about program planning standards at the state level and also from other libraries, so looking at what other libraries have done to get some examples. And then as far as some of the actions we identified, Liz will be looking at the Connecticut State Library's best practices. There is a link to their facility's best practices in the minutes, so if you want to check those out. Like I said, she will be looking at some other examples of program plans and as well as the needs identified by herself and her staff. Greg is going to be reaching out to the Burgers to discuss a proposal for program planning consulting. And finally, And finally, yep, so we recommend that upon the receipt of a proposal, we consider it, review it, maybe ask them questions. And if we find it to be satisfactory, we vote on it. So does anyone have questions? No? Okay.
No, thank you. Yeah, my question really has to do with the outreach and survey subcommittee, not the program piece. I believe if I read this right, they anticipated, or December 30th, we will have a draft of the survey they, they intend to send out. Is that how I'm reading this?
I'm sorry, what was that you gave Bob?
December 30th?
Yes.
Okay, and my, my other question on, on this has to do with where, where the surveys all going out to? I'm trying to understand the database, Elizabeth reported there are 6,313 emails in the LCI database. I presume that's the library.
Yeah, Liz can answer that.
So you don't have those numbers, didn't get those numbers yet?
Bob, I'm sorry, it's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry. You don't have, you don't know how many additional email addresses are available through the other services, BPL and Town Hall?
We don't, I, I, Town Hall wasn't able to give me an exact number of people on the email distribution list. Leisure Services is just at about over a thousand emails. And then LCI is from the Library Consortium, and that is the one that has the, the most emails. That being said, we are, we are currently in the process of getting new email distribution software that will be able to de-duplicate all of those email addresses. But there are a variety of ways that we are going to disperse that survey. It will not just be digital. It'll also be a physical share. And we are hoping that we're going to be able to share that via the mail somehow. Those options are still being explored. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, and I did not mention that we're also going to use our social media feeds.
Mark, yes?
When, when you go through the programming exercise and establish all the spaces and uses and so forth, I, I just don't want to have you lose track of how it all dovetails with other facilities in town. Just keep that in mind, so some things might take place in other locations possibly, and you might not have to build every space that you have, or, or the other way around. There might be some other facilities that want to see you having something as well, so. Another bullet point to add as you, as you go through the, the exercise.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions for Leah? And I will just, Maxine signed out, but Leah and I were on the subcommittee meeting with Maxine on Saturday night. And what did I want to add to that? The subcommittee is establishing a timeline that will come forward to this committee for approval. We're expecting that there will be several iterations of a survey. Once the working committee receives a first draft, they will review a comment, get back to the Burgers, and get an iteration that can be shared with this committee. Nothing will be finalized. It's all working, work product being produced. The meetings with the subcommittees, I believe, are to take place this Saturday prior to this full committee meeting. Is that correctly? I think that's right. And I think that's really it. I mean, everything is, the, the minutes are pretty, I think, detailed with respect to the, both subcommittees. And I know that Mark has a short report on his subcommittee.
Yeah, we're, time-wise, we're okay lagging a little bit behind the other subcommittees for selecting a construction manager, that process. So tentatively, we're meeting, haven't heard from everybody yet January 19th at 5:30, but we haven't confirmed that yet. But that's when we'll start our process.
Any questions for Mark? All right, Elizabeth?
The only thing I really have to report is that Bloomfield Public Library is currently on a big PR campaign to share all of our services during the COVID-19 pandemic and to encourage more people to get library cards. A flyer was sent out to all residents in Bloomfield this week. And we also had a full-page advertisement in the Bloomfield Messenger and through strategic social media placements. That was all done with funding from the governor with a specific directive to encourage library use during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Any questions for Elizabeth on her director's report? Okay, great. Thank you, Elizabeth. Our next meetings again are December 30th, and then the first meeting in January will be on the 13th. Before we go into public comment, is there any new business that the body would like to raise? Nancy, oh, Bob, yes.
Thank you. I have to agree, and I think it's important that we identify the exact sites that we're going to be considering. We don't have to pick a site or two or three sites, but we need to identify the sites that we're going to be seriously considering. And look, and I agree, those need to be involved in the outreach community. They need to know what we're saying, what I'm thinking is. We don't have to, for instance, at Town Hall, we don't have to tell them it's Park Avenue side or Bloomfield Avenue side. Just that Town Hall is one of the sites, that type of thing. I think we need to pretty much decide before the survey goes out. And I think it's important that, that information is in that survey. Thank you.
Richard, were you looking to get confirmation from us about adding one of the sites to the list?
I, I don't need, I don't need that decision tonight.
Okay. All right, great. Nancy, is there any public comment?
Yep, first we have Sten Casperson. Okay, Sten, unmute yourself and speak.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Chairman Davis. Sten Casperson, Six Stone Hill Road. I have an input, a suggestion for the committee. It happens to go very well with the TSKP presentation today. The subject was softly alluded to by Ritzard, but I want to flesh it out. I suggest that the committee consider the following. Given that there are two primary sites, one of which is the existing McMahon site, discussed as probably the best building site for a one-level, spread-out, fully-functional spacious building with adjacent parking. Given that there is an existing Prosser site, which is known not to be an easy site to build on, the floodplain probably would require a two-story building. Parking would be away from the building. We have the potential roundabouts. We have the next-door development with whatever constraints that may offer, visible or otherwise. The McMahon Library addresses a large population which is nearby. It desires an expansion of services, I believe. The existing Prosser Library is favored by many to retain the town center concept. It's very familiar to many people over many years. It is an effect, a fixture to many users. The suggestion is to retain both a McMahon and a Prosser Library, but switch the sites. Build a one-story, spread-out, full-function, new, labeled Prosser Library on the current McMahon site. Switch, transfer, the named McMahon Library to a renovated current Prosser building in the current location. Use those two sites, use them to their best advantage. Retain the names, retain the functions. Some advantages, they're obvious. Use the easiest, the best building site for the larger building. Address the population needs that have come up. Don't force-fit, those are my terms, my words. Don't force-fit a larger building on the current Prosser site. Retain the town center layout with renovation of that current Prosser building, which is going to be required anyway for whatever function it would serve going down the road. There may be possible cost savings to this concept. Those estimates need to be made. Construction costs, the layout, one versus two stories, the required workarounds of the current Prosser site, including the roundabouts, the floodplain, a pedestrian bridge. The committee should consider cost, preliminary cost estimates for any site at some point anyway. Some disadvantages, they're obvious. The main library would not be in this, in the town center. There is, and there would be, some emotional loss of a Prosser library in the center. So you have balances here, pros, cons, what's good, what's not so good. So that's my suggestion. One line, consider switching the two sites, switching libraries on which of the two sites. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a clarification on that, so we don't head down the wrong path. Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you've presented so far on the McMahon site, that conceptual footprint was a two-story building, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Nancy, any other comments?
Yes, we have Counselor Danielle Wong. I'm gonna let her in, and unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for all the insight tonight. I just wanted to be consistent in my comments in this meeting. The McMahon Library site clearly is the most feasible from, and desirable from an architectural standpoint. It is also most desirable from a socioeconomic and social equity standpoint as well. The residents that require these resources are located on the east side. To Ms. Hager's point earlier in the meeting, I, I really appreciated that. I encourage this committee to prioritize the intersectional implications of relocating the main branch to the McMahon site. And to Sten's point, would service a large set of the population in Bloomfield from transportation challenges to professional development access. That's a pretty awesome idea. I hope this committee continues to lean into and embrace. So thank you. Withstanding that, I, I thank Greg for his leadership, and I am excited for the process experience that he brings to the table. So kudos to our chair, and, and thank you, Elizabeth, for your reports. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all.
That's it.
That's it. Okay, great. Like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Lois, a second?
I'll second.
Great, all in favor?
All right.
Great. All right, everyone, have a wonderful holiday, holiday season, and we'll look forward to touching base on the 30th for our next meeting. And again, welcome to Christine, Robert, and Vangela. Nice seeing you all, and look forward to working with you. All right, good night, everyone.
Night, thank you.